Okay, would you like to start the meeting here with an opening prayer? Anybody want to take a prayer?
I would like to.
Okay.
Most gracious have followed just for this day and thank for this opportunity, dear Lord, to come together as a group, come together as a community, dear Lord. Let us all focus on why we're here and what we represent, dear Lord, and we just pray that we'll seek your will in all choices that we do. In your name we pray.
Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last chance, anybody signing up for the public hearing?
Okay, I'd like to call all of the June 9th meetings of Upton County Planning and Zoning Commission. We're going to start off, I think Mr. Doug's got some introduction he needs to make here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board of Planning Commission. We're introducing our summer intern, Pearl Assamwa. She is a student from Ghana and she attends Auburn University. She's in a master's program near and dear to my heart because it's what I do for a living. It's the Community Planning Program. Okay, so she's here with us for the summer, learning how planning is done in a small community in America. So, we're very appreciative of her efforts for the summer. And you'll see her at at least one or two more meetings, I think first or second week of August, she's got to go back to school. Thank you for letting me introduce her.
Nice to have you.
Welcome.
Look forward to working with you. Okay, we have roll call.
Commissioner Hilton, Chairman Fallon.
Here.
Commissioner Morphine.
Here.
Vice Chair Rush.
Right.
Commissioner Louise.
Here.
For the record, it shows Commissioner Hilton is absent as the chairman of behalf of the court.
Thank you. All right, we want to move on to adoption of the meeting minutes of last meetings. Is there any way to have any changes you need to make or anything from the last minutes that need to be addressed?
Need to make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Anonymous. All right, now we're going to move on into old business, which is the public hearing. It was continued previously on subdivision ordinance amendments and also sort of combined the two with the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendments, which we've actually had a scheduled meeting with the county commissioners tomorrow that for some reason they decided to change at the last minute of the public hearing that we're not going to have tomorrow. But we're still going to, I think we should continue this until we get through with the, until we can work forward with it. Is that suitable to continue then?
I'll make a motion, we continue.
On both items, A and B?
Both items.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Anonymous again. All right, new business, we've got Serenity Lake subdivision review. Now, Serenity Lake, y'all have a presentation you would like to make?
Sure.
Okay. This time we allow you to make your presentation. It's not an open public hearing. I'm going to flip them and then go to the staff. The, not a public hearing, so we won't hear from individuals in this case today, just the Serenity Group for now. If you'd like to get started.
Dan Sprigetti, 975 Western American Drive, Wisconsin. If you, thank you for being here tonight. We've given you the latest and greatest plot map. Basically, we took Doug's comments and worked on that today to just revise some of the things that are on there, so I just wanted to bring it sort of to your attention. We're looking at 94 lots, agricultural, and AR zoning, and using the current ordinances that are available. And so that's the plot that's in front of you right now. If you look at, it is going to be private roads currently, that's what we're doing, just FYI on there. I'm scanning this list here, so forgive me. Streets are on there. Did we rename two of the streets because they thought possibly because the word "lake" could be problem some because there's other streets that have the word "lake" in there? So we changed two of those streets for that. If you look, there's a certificate in the upper or the lower left-hand corner of, for you to sign, that's on there. We also changed to, it says in the legend, or by the legend, it says AR zoning. That was another thing that Doug brought to our attention. Reeves Creek is now identified in blue with arrows showing you flow where that is. And of course, the setbacks are all in there as well, which is difficult, it's a state issue. No public amenities of any kind, just FYI on that. Fits the criteria for, the natural land there based on their low-density rural, so it fits that definition as well. The new names are Serenity Trail and Pinnacle Point, which are the new names of the roads. And the only thing that, we have a 3,000-foot road, that first road off of Alabama Road, so if there had to be a variance, that would be it. We were under the impression that if it's a private road, that we don't have that criteria. So, just FYI, we're still working through that ordinance. That's the only variance that was in all of our packets, and we were trying to avoid the variance if we can. Okay?
Okay.
So let's answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Staff, Mr. Galloway, I'm sorry, we'll move to the staff report.
No problem. In your 11-page report, you're going to see where I, and this is, most of the plaques are administratively reviewed, this is the format I use when it's between me and the surveyor, so I just use the same format that I traditionally do. Now, the red, and that's what I'm going to concentrate on, is the comments, observations, or questions, or changes that I suggested in my report. There are 24 of those, I'm not going to-
Can we get a screen, you can put it on screen?
I've already notified IT-
Okay.
It's an IT issue, they were on before. I'm not quite sure what happened. So, I apologize to the audience, they're just not going to be up there, we're just going to have to talk you through it. So, I'll go through some of the red elements that are in that report. I apologize for how late you got it, but just a lot of work to be done for Upton County. And I'm not going to hit all of them, but if you've got a specific question, you may have heard that some of them have been answered already by the applicants, they obviously jumped on the comments themselves. There was a question earlier, and I'll just get on it quickly, there was an issue that they thought that the moratorium had stopped this because of the language in the ordinance about an official submittal date. But the bottom line, the county attorney and I talked about this and agreed that because they had to submit, and they did submit five days before they had to, and before the moratorium, that they were called vested. This is a technical term in planning that we have to use, whether it's a building permit or a subdivision plat. So they were grandfathered, or, I'm sorry, they were vested in turning it in, so they sort of beat the deadline, and that's why we are able to process through this. We did have a DRC meeting, there was a portion of this where there's some questions from the public that were submitted to, you've got copies of those in your packet, about the plans for the utilities. And as you know, there's no plan for water from the county, or sanitary sewer from the county, this is all going to be lot by lot. So, any comments would come from the Environmental Health Department, and I don't know that they really comment on something like this, they're sort of a permit-by-permit kind of agency, so we could certainly ask them if they have any other observations. They were invited to the DRC meeting, they did not attend, they were invited to submit written comments, but again, that agency tends to do a permit-by-permit, application-by-application, and so I'm going to guess that that's what happened in this particular case. They were given a copy of the plan. Also calling this to your attention, you know that you do not have to make a decision tonight, you have a 30-day window to make your decision. Unfortunately, if you don't make your decision tonight, that 30 days will have to be a special meeting, because I think your next meeting is like 34 or 35 days out, so just, that's got to be a factor in your decision, and then we can certainly, over the next, if you choose not to make a decision tonight, we can, we'll schedule and work on, you know, Claude LePey and I and Pearl will work with you on getting a schedule together for a special meeting, if that's what you decide upon. You heard reference to the name of the street already, apparently that's been changed. There has been discussion between me in particular with the developer, and I probably misled them a little bit in terms of what sort of recreation facilities they could have in terms of, for the community, what they were allowed to do under PEM and ask for, and what they're allowed to do in the AR. I think they could ask for variance on that, because they're allowed to have a playground apart, but it's stipulated in the AR zoning that it must be public. So, that use is permitted, but the ordinance speaks to who can own it. I think it would be a reasonable request to ask for variance to allow it to be private. Again, you're not allowed to have use variances, but this wouldn't be a use variance because the use is allowed, it's just, you know, in our ordinance says that it can't be private, it's got to be public. So again, that's something they can discuss in the future or work out with us, however they want to work on that. There's extensive discussion in the report about consistency with a comprehensive plan. We could certainly go into that in detail, I'm not going to do that here. And there certainly was a lot of discussion earlier under the rezoning application. There are at least a minimum of three actions that you must take in addition to, you know, voting for the subdivision plat approving it or denying it. The names in the subdivision have to be approved by the planning commission, so that's the name of the subdivision and the name of the roads. The primary reason for that is just make sure you're not repeating something that's already in the county, so that's, those are separate votes. And then you heard reference to a variance because there's a limit to the length of a dead end or a cul-de-sac road, and you heard the applicant discuss the one is a little bit too long. So that could be a variance that could be considered by the planning commission. There's been discussion in the past about surety in terms of the improvements being finished, now recognizing that they're mostly now private, that can still be discussion. Obviously, it's not quite as important if it was to be dedicated to the county, but it still would be an issue that if something happens to the developer, you still want the roads to be completed out there. So, you don't have to have an answer on the surety issue, bonds or whatever measures that you happen to take, but that's discussion that before you get the final plat would have to be held. Now, final plat, this is a preliminary stage, they have two years. If you approve the preliminary plat, they don't have to come back for another two years. If you get that approval, they're allowed to do any of what we call horizontal improvements, they can build roads, put in any pipes, anything like that, lines like water sewer, electric, something similar. They may not sell any lots, they may not propose to sell any lots or anything like that, and they may not build any homes until they have the final plat approval. And again, that does rely with the planning commission. I think those are the most critical components of my comments. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any more comments on this.
We have any questions from board members? Anybody?
My name is Senator Galloway, and I'm counsel.
Are you signed up, sir?
I was told you weren't having a hearing.
Yeah, right, so we're, I'm sorry, you can't speak, sir?
All right. You're the line counsel for the-
Yeah, they had the opportunity to speak, sir, you're not signed up.
So, I'd like more clarification on the variance needed for the 3,000-foot road.
Basically, they can either advise you that within the next 30 days they change it to shorten that up, or they just are asking for variance, saying that, you know, we do recognize that we exceed the maximum length that that road is allowed to be, and the only way that they get an okay is for you to grant them a variance. Okay, it's all right if they're longer than the-
Just to clarify, for that variance, though, they need an application for variance, to be simple.
No, it's part of the subdivision review. Everything on that plat is open for review, and that's one of those things.
Okay, we don't have any further questions, we have any motions?
I'll make a motion that we table it for today, so I can do some more reading and studying, and we'll have to have a special call meeting.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, any other motions?
I'm not sure we deny the project as it doesn't fit the comprehensive plan or the character area.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
4:0, 3:1?
3:1.
3:1. Very good.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which would be the appeal of the zoning administrator's decision, potential business tenant to be located at 3347 Crest Highway, Highway 74, determined to be industrial use, denial of occupational tax certificate, C2 zoning, owner Thomas Pollard, parcel number 023D, 049A, is 1.05 acres. And do we have, does somebody, Mr. Pollard, would you, did you have something you want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please.
Tom Pollard, 3347 Crest Highway, also known as Air Tech Heating and Cooling, sits out there on the corner of Old Alabama and 3347, uh, Highway 74 West. A little bit about that building, that was built by my uncle back in the late 60s, at which time it was used for Volkswagen repair shop back when we had Volkswagens. So, that's what it was used for all of those years. As he got out of it, the property grew up, it turned into an eyesore. I was looking to locate an HVAC business there in 99, which I did, I bought the property from him then. I don't know if there's anybody here that remembers what that piece of property looked like before I got a hold of it, but there's a significant difference now as to what it was. As I said, I've used that business, that property for an HVAC business for 24 years. There's never been any sort of complaints of anything going on there as far as noise, traffic, disruptions to neighbors or adjacent property owners, never anything about that. I carried that business through 2024. I'm not currently using that as a business, it's not vacant, I still do use it to clear up office work and take care of stuff that's carried over from this business. I've had a gentleman approach me about leasing that property for a mechanical contracting business. I haven't been noticed to me, well, he called to check with building his own and to see if he could get a business license for this. However, the word manufacturing came up in the discussion on this. Well, that just sent a red flag up, and everybody just thought that this is a completely, just some sort of great big manufacturing entity that's fixing to happen and take place where it women, in reality, we're talking a small-time operation, as small or smaller than what I carried on there in an HVAC business. I was shocked when the license was denied. In dealing with this over the past three or four weeks, you know, I have actually come to find out there are several restrictions that I was absolutely not aware of when it was on C2. Going back to that, that property was always C2. When I began to dot the i's and cross the t's and make sure everything's covered, because my father was in at the time and I was getting ready to make sure that when I do buy him out, I want all of this straight and clear. Come to find out, it was listed as AR, and Mr. Courier informed me about how all this happened back in, I think, 95 or something, they blanketed it and everything. So, it was set straight by planning its own and as C2, I think around 2008, somewhere thereabouts. My, the problem I've got with it is, you know, that business has always been nicely, nice, neat, clean, quiet, non-disruptive, even carrying on the business that I have over the past 24 years in the HVAC industry. Mr. Helms has approached me about leasing that building, doing mechanical contracting work, which also will include, meaning that he's doing work for industries, whoever, wherever that may take the business, and that mechanical contracting covers a wide area of things in industrial or commercial buildings or whatever, and some of that includes manufacturing specialty machine parts for their equipment. I consider that to be a service business. He will take a phone call, they've got a problem, he goes out, assesses the situation, makes a recommendation, or whatever it's going to take to fix their problem, and that may include manufacturing some specialty part. So there would be a few machines in that building that are used for that purpose. And as I said, the license was denied. As a failsafe to that, I also submitted an application for rezoning to M2 Light Manufacturing. If we can't see ourselves clear to get this business license issued to him, unconditional as it is, as the property says. This is a small piece of property we're talking about, sits on about an acre. So anyway, we're not talking about a vast property here that's making a huge impact on anybody. There are no directly adjacent neighbors or connecting neighbors, no property owners nor houses. We've got road frames of Crest Highway down the front side, Old Alabama Road down the other side, a vacant lot that had dilapidated mobile home on it that's now torn down, which belongs to cousins of mine, which I have the option to buy that in due time, and the lot right beside it I own also. This is not connected to anybody. So, my, my purpose is, and the reason I'm here is, I want some reconsideration given to issuing a business license to Mr. Helms for a mechanical contracting business unconditionally, and leaving everything just as it is right now. If there's, if that just absolutely cannot be done, and we can't see our way to get that done, then I am moving forward with the application and the request to have it rezoned M1 and still carry out the very same small, quiet, reputable business that we're talking about putting in there now. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to make note, we were really supposed to be allowing this, three minutes per speaker, went a little bit over, so, oh, five minutes, excuse me, okay. So, Mr. Helms, would you like to? Okay, remember you're allowed it, allowed it five minutes.
I'm Mr. Helms, I think 37 Sunnyside Road, I'd like to thank Mr. Pollard for doing all he's done for me. As you said, I approached him about leasing this building. To give you some backstory, I grew up in this community, I graduated from this high school, I moved off, studied, and worked, my wife and I decided to come back. We actually live on Sunnyside Road, which is in this neighborhood where this building is. And two years ago, I started a design drafting company in connection with my current employment with a mechanical contractor, and I have the, have the probable work of doing some in-house fabrication, manufacturing of components. And what I do is I deal with certain automated companies and certain manufacturing companies, and they will have small issues here, sometimes larger issues, and I'll go and try to solve their problems. Approximately 50% of the operations would be manufacturing some one-off parts, or just a small project-oriented section of parts. As far as the footprint there, externally from the building, I don't believe neighbors would notice any difference in the operations, it would be typical hours, be quiet, I'm talking about three machines in this building with me and two employees, hopefully. Aside from that, welcome to take on any questions, and I hope that the board can consider operating there as current zone. I'm not literate on all the facets that go along with it, but I feel that manufacturing is a strong term for what I'm trying to do, it just, it's a part of it, but other than that, thank you.
Mr. Doug, we have a staff report you want?
Absolutely. So, to set the table, we've got sort of two questions tonight. One is an appeal of my decision, and then the other one, as you heard, is the potential rezoning. It's within our ordinances, and this happens once in a while, where I have to make a decision, someone might unlike my decision. So, it's built in the ordinance, and this is a traditional thing to appeal your decision. I think you're wrong, and you appealed it in this case in Upton County to the planning commission, and so that's it. When we had the discussion, you know, we all arrived at this, what's the best course for him to pursue this and to get what he wants, as opposed to what I believe the codes dictate? And so that's what we do, we set up, I said, you just appeal my decision, planning commission will decide whether to uphold my decision or grant your appeal, and that's where we are here. So, you don't see a formal staff report, what I have to do is I have to write a letter that is my decision, and then what he does is he appeals that letter. So, in your packet, you'll see just a very simple letter with his application, where I basically said, based on my understanding of this business, it doesn't fit within the C2 zoning, that's the argument here. So your tenant may not be in this location, we will not issue an occupation tax certificate because of the zoning on the property. Obviously, they disagreed, and they, he filed his appeal, and that's- Obviously, they disagreed, and they, he filed his appeal, and that's the first part of this. The second part is if, again, based on your decision, if you uphold my decision, then he's going to want to go forward with rezoning, and that, we'll discuss that too. If you overturn my decision and grant his appeal, then I would ask you to ask him, he might as well just dismiss the rezoning because you don't need to go forward with that because he's been allowed to have that tenant in that building. So let's go into why I said, what I said in the letter. Again, the zoning is C2, and it's my determination that based on his description and the paperwork that they provided, you have what I had. This is an industrial use which is most appropriate in M1, which is light industrial, although it could go in M2 also. Highmark, and you have a business plan, which was very educational for me. It describes the business. They work with raw materials like metal, plastic, wood, produce finished products for various industries, including potentially aerospace, automotive, and manufacturing. It says, "The company will serve industrial and commercial clients needing high-quality machined components, specially fasteners, mechanical assemblies, and dimensional inspection services." It's described as a machining operation or machining operations. Well, I guess maybe one of the questions you've asked is, what's a typical C2? Walmart would be a typical C2, Dollar General. So is this sort of business that you would expect to be in the Walmart shopping center or next to a Dollar General in a strip center? And I think just if you look at it that way, because that's the same zoning, whether it was a Walmart or what's requested here to go into that sort of zoning. If you look at the M1 zoning, it actually lists machine shop. So to me, it's pretty clear that in the M1 zoning, that's where this belongs. It does not belong on the C2. The description of the C2 is it's for consumer retail businesses and services, sold for consumptive use by the average, the average consumer. That's not what this, it's their specialty parts for industry. So I don't think this fits the C2 at all, and that's the reason why I deny the occupation tax, and I ask you to uphold my denial of granting the occupation tax in this location. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
One of the things that I have for Mr. Helms, is this a five-day operation or will you be working on the weekends as well?
It would be a five-day operation, typically seven to 5:30 the latest.
And what kind of type of machines were you discussing?
CNC mills and CNC legs and CMM measuring devices.
So, Mr. Doug, would, I'd like to have an understanding of the definition of manufacturing, and also how do we view this as, so I understand C2 is Dollar General, Walmart, what would you see in the same center with that? But how much different is this than what Mr. Pollard had previously with air tech heating and cooling? Because I know what his business was consisted of. He was manufacturing what we call hard duct. He would form hard duct and form different components that he needed for HVAC systems that he installed. So I just wanted, I'd like to understand the difference in that and the definition of manufacturing versus, I don't really see this as manufacturing, but I'll let you give me that definition and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Sure. Only recently have we had a decision that maybe tells us where the Board of Commissioners wants to go, because these sort of contractors, I think, belonged in the M1 and M2. Obviously, this operation has been in C2 for these years, and recently, the Board of Commissioners has decided that, you're familiar with the church, that just was allowed for a certain HVAC company to move into it, which was zoned, not zoned, M1. And so obviously, they felt that it was appropriate to go on US-19 for that rezoning. So they at least have called out HVAC companies as being something separate and allowable in that particular area. So that's a recent decision. Basically, manufacturing, this is not homeowners. You don't call up and say, hey, I need a specialty part for this. They in their own description say, we're for industry. This isn't a homeowner doing retail and I go out to their house. These aren't the traditional, sold for consumptive use by the average consumer. The average consumer doesn't need these parts. It's a very specialty business for businesses, and that's normally in an M1 or an M2 zoning. Definition of manufacturing, I'll have to see if we actually have a definition in the code. If we don't, then you'd have to just pull out a dictionary, that's the default of manufacturing. No, I don't see a definition in our code of what manufacturing is defined as, so we just have to get a dictionary and use that definition?
I believe I have a understanding of what manufacturing is, is the, is the manufacturing of products and goods to be sold to the general public, to be used for, general products be used for sold to general public is manufacturing, is what I would have the understanding of it to be. Now, we can look it up in the web if you want to, but I'm just trying to figure out how this is different than many other businesses that are in C2 that we currently have operating, and how, how much different is it from what it was currently ran? But if you're saying that our current ordinance or that our commissioners, if we're looking at now putting HVAC and other businesses that if they manufacture a part of some kind, as we want to call it, or if we fabricate, is what I would like to say, a part of some kind, do they all need to be in M1 now if they're fabricating parts?
Apparently not if they're an air conditioning company.
Well, I had previously visited your business, and at least from the descriptions I'm hearing, I don't see a vast difference in what has been done there for a long period of time and what you're proposing to do. You had mentioned you had been in, I mean, they were manufacturing gut work and plenums for, for the needs, right?
Right. I do have an opinion about this manufacturing that might help. I would, if I might just read this, this is an excerpt of the letter that I've sent to Mr. Courier, and in one of the paragraphs, as a matter of fact, one of the first paragraphs is, my interpretation of, reads as is. "When I think of manufacturing, it brings to mind mass production of goods and products to be shipped out in bulk quarantines. I visualize large buildings or plants with numerous people for work points located on a large tract of land and huge paved lots. I see shipping and receiving departments and transportation trucks coming and going on a continual basis. None of this could be further from the reality of what the proposed use of this property would be."
Any other questions?
No problem.
Okay. Motion to act one way or the other?
I live in the district, I've been there 40 years. I know the air tech has always kept their yards really nice. I mean, at times, I'll often wonder where they open or close because it was so neat. But personally, I mean, from what Mr. Pollard did and what Mr. Helms is wanting to do, there's not a lot of difference. So, I mean, I would definitely vote for this.
You made a motion to approve? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we need to clarify, the motion was to sustain the appeal.
Sustain the appeal, yes.
And the seconded was?
Chairman, I may not. Commissioner Bush.
Thank you.
So based on that, with the approval of your occupational tax certificate, you want to drop your request for rezoning?
Yes, sir, I would withdraw.
Okay. All right. That takes item C off the agenda. Okay, we can move on to item D, which is the subdivision ordinance text amendment. This has to do with the ordinance for Upson County, Georgia. amend the code of Upson County, amend the M1 and M2 sections of Upson County zoning ordinance to rename those zoning districts to better reflect the permitted uses and certain technology-related permitted uses to create the technology overlay zoning district. To add definitions to establish technology overlay district standards related to permitted uses, the development standards, design guidelines, administrative and enforcement, providing for repeal conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Doug, do you have any kind of presentation there, Slade? Does anybody want?
I can go first or you can go first, whichever you.
That's fine, you go ahead.
All right, I can fill in the gaps. Again, you had them approach you the last meeting that they were thinking about this and giving you the concept of what they wanted, and of course, I was tasked with the idea to take their idea, the sort of model ordinance that they had, and maybe mold it more into what fits in the Upson County ordinances. Not a whole lot to this presentation. Basically, one of the primary thoughts is that this would open, make it easier for us to be open up to data centers, which is certainly a hot topic in the state right now, and I'm sure Slade can fill you in a little bit more on that. Now, one of my questions when I first heard it is, well, why don't we just modify the M1 and the M2 to allow these type of uses? And when I talked to Mr. Tinsley, the county manager, he said, yeah, let's go ahead. So you heard the proposal at the last meeting that we would then place this overlay over the IDA property and two other private interest properties that you recall that we looked at, aerial photographs, and I've got those here. With the change of the M1 and M2, we don't really need to have an overlay over the IDA property, we've already incorporated those type uses. But of course, we still have to create this overlay district, and then it will be placed wherever it is that the Board of Commissioners wants it to be placed. So what you see in this proposal is the modification language for the M1 and M2 to allow these type of uses. I also propose that we change the name of the M1 and M2 to reflect this technology and the fact that it's also industrial. So it would still be M1 and M2, but it would be manufacturing industrial technology. So it would reflect all of those type of uses in the zoning district, just a name change. So then you look at the minor modifications to the M1 and M2 when we go to the overlay district. So again, what this would do, as it's envisioned and explained to me, is whatever property this would go on, the underlying zoning district would stay. The proposal that you've got, these specific parcels that were brought to you, both have AR zoning on them. So this would allow a second zoning to go on top, like having a complete second zoning district. So the owners could maintain AR uses and continue with that, especially if these technology uses never show up. But if they do and they reach a contract, then they would be allowed to elevate to this technology overlay. Because if you look at the language, it's a pretty complete zoning district, it doesn't have all the details for your other zoning district, but it is pretty complete. So we talked about what the permitted uses are, research and development facilities, technology-based manufacturing, data centers, office buildings for technology companies, educational training facilities related to technology, the uses that would naturally accompany those, and electrical infrastructure that might be above and beyond the normal would be needed for these sort of requirements. And then talk about the typical things in the zoning district, setbacks, parking requirements, landscaping, building height, environmental protection, et cetera. Now, one of the things I will note in the height is that they wanted to go to 70 feet for these technology uses. So that's something a little unusual compared to some of our other districts, but that's some of the language that's in there. Open speak, open space requirement, signage, green space, et cetera. So we're creating this overlay which won't be on any property right of way. We've modified the M1 and M2 to allow the same sort of uses, so we don't need the overlay over M1 and M2. And that's pretty much it, this is a text amendment. We don't, at this time, we don't have specific properties to look at. In the discussions that I had with Mr. Gullidge and Mr. Tinsley, I think we came to the agreement that these private interests would apply for the rezoning to this overlay themselves. And of course, with the other amendments, we don't need to put the overlay on the IDA property because we've incorporated these into the M1 and M2. So that's pretty much it. No specific property, this is not a rezoning of any property at this time, only text amendments to the M1, the M2, and create a brand-new overlay called the technology overlay district.
Okay. Slade?
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Doug did a great job explaining the text amendment and the overlay district. We're looking to attract technology companies to Upson County, and we look at this as a very useful tool, toolbox, and a very strong statement to that industry that we want them to come here. So I appreciate y'all's support, glad to answer any questions.
Okay. So basically, what we're doing, where we were presented last time, we're looking at overlay which would have changed the zoning of certain pieces of property by doing what Doug has proposed here, is basically just changing the wording on the M1 and M2 that would allow for these things, and if individual property owners want to apply for a rezoning under the M1 and M2, this would simplify it from the standpoint of the office there, what the way it's worded. Is that correct? Is it?
Or place the overlay.
So you're saying an overlay, you're saying that it could be an AR, but it could also be a M2 or a M1 zone?
And generally, an overlay is just a small change, like your gateway corridor overlay, it just has very small changes, requirements for parcels that touch the gateway. This is almost like having a double zoning district on your property.
Okay. Do we, now what exactly, do we need to have a motion to approve this?
Well, this is your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, either for it or against it, if you want any additional changes to the language.
Any recommendations or any questions or any thought process there? I don't see any problem with going through with it, I think that this.
It's only a simple fact on current AR properties, there's only things other than M1 and M2 that.
Right, it just allows them to be, from what I understand, allows them to be.
On a catch-by-catch basis.
Right.
Okay, so you did say that like if a individual comes forth that's wanting to put one of these, they'll have to come before the planning board or the Board of Commissioners?
It would be a regular rezoning application as you normally see.
So we would just be making a recommendation to change the wording and allow this to happen?
Mm-hmm.
Adam? Yep. I don't have a problem with that.
Need a motion to recommend?
Yeah, motion, recommendation, do?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 4-0, you're recommending to the Board of Commissioners approval of this that says present. Correct, thank you.
Okay, we have no other business. Do we have any planning or commission issues or announcements? Then I guess y'all saw that our meeting with the county commissioners got canceled. Don't really know why at this particular point they have chosen not to do a full meeting with all of us, not a public meeting, which I think is a detriment. I think you could have got a whole lot more done with this all meeting, disappointed with that fact, but that's the option we were given, so.
I agree.
I think we need to express our disagreement in what happened. Okay, secretary, any issues, announcements?
All right, one of those things was what you just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, is as you all know here, we are paring down that meeting. are paring down that meeting. It will not be a public meeting, it'll just be two planning commissioners, two board commissioners and staff. I got told this afternoon that this decision had been made, so it was news to me also. So we will be having the meeting with the smaller group tomorrow. The appeal of the denial of the rezoning for the 10-acre lake, of course, that's an appeal of the Board of Commissioners' decision to deny the rezoning. That has been submitted to the Superior Court. The county attorney has a 30-day window to then respond to that appeal. I believe we're, still got a week, a couple of weeks, two, two and a half weeks to that end of the 30 days. So, you know, we just don't know how that's going to turn out, but it is in the court system for appeal of that denial of the rezoning. In your packets, you had a copy of the moratorium ordinance, the revised one, that basically says no subdivisions at all. That's a modification of the last one that would have been ending soon, or would have just previously? No, I guess in June, so it would have been coming up, but they decided to extend it 180 days. So if you're getting questions like I have gotten questions, you have a copy of that moratorium ordinance, so please explain the best you can, and if you just want to refer them to me. I know the chairman said that he had somebody approach him about being able to appeal for their particular property. I think there is a paragraph in that resolution that does speak about appeal. I have no idea how that's going to happen. I mean, it's referenced in the resolution, but that is mentioned in the resolution in that large paragraph at the end. So that's 180-day moratorium. Obviously, I think the outcome of your meeting tomorrow, as pared down as a week, hopefully will get us in the direction of getting some answers, so that in the future, that moratorium's not necessary, because we've put into ordinance whatever it is that the county wants to put into the ordinance. And then lastly, that copy, the rules of procedure, that's the one that was adopted, the chairman had signed it, I had already signed it, so that rules of procedure, as good as your official rules of procedure until you change them again. I think technically, our ordinance says that every two years on the even year, we discuss whether they're going to make any more changes. So if you certainly have any more changes, we'll be bringing up the end next year, but that is your rules of procedure for now. And that's it from the staff, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, if we have nothing else, then adjourn the meeting. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting, excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I say? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Congratulations, and I will get up before the Board of Commissioners.